So this is the, um, if, can somebody, somebody who isn't muted, can you mute? We're getting some feedback. Okay, thank you. This is the policy committee meeting for September 14th, 2020. And everything, but we had some issues with materials being posted. I don't know all the details. It sounds like there may be some issues with Google that are yet to be figured out. Anyway, so some of us got, uh, the material was late and my apologies for that. We're going to be trying to problem solve that so that in future, everybody gets things with, with good notice. Okay, so, um, we've got a pretty busy agenda. So I want to be as efficient as we can during this meeting. And a couple of people are going to be joining us late. I know Liz is busy until at least five. Is she going to be joining us after that, Mary?
Uh, that's the hope. I think there was a glitch in, uh, in her proceedings, so she may be a little later.
Okay, okay, well, we're in your good hands, so. Okay, so we have some updates for two policies before we launch into some discussion about revisions. So we have a staff update on the student suicide prevention policy and the student conduct and discipline policy. Mary, are you going to be handling both of those?
I am, and I wanted to note, um, uh, the, we had requested the staff who were involved, who are involved in the, the suicide prevention policy, but they have, um, they informed me that they, they were at a training and so they were unavailable, but they will, um, but I did want to let you know that we met with them last week with Shanice and Rachel, oh wait, Rachel's not here. Oh, um, uh, to discuss, um, moving forward and follow, and, uh, with stakeholder engagement. They have, they had already done some engagement, um, but they took, uh, they reviewed the guidance and with our assistance, they are developing a plan which they will present to us at the next, um, policy committee meeting. Um, and by that time, they will also have some information of what they believe they'll have some engagement already, you know, uh, under their belt by that time. So, uh, we should have a full report from them at the next, uh, meeting. With regard to the student conduct policy, there's not a lot to add. We're still, as, uh, we're still in the same holding pattern as we were at the last, um, committee meeting. We, uh, the district is working with PAT to resolve some issues around, as you know, the, the safety provision, which relates directly to this policy. And so those discussions have not begun yet. I don't, I neglected to ask Liz when, uh, they were, um, scheduled to meet, but, um, we can follow up later if we want. If, I don't know if Liz has that information, but I don't. Um, I think that's all I have on those two policies.
So I think, um, I think we asked this question at the last meeting, but, um, I, I don't actually remember the details of the response. Do you know if, um, the, since the poli, the new policy is in abeyance and the new policy language, the proposed policy is substantially different from the policy that's on the book? Where do we stand in terms of student handbook?
So the PAT had asked us to return to the student handbook language from 2017 and we're, that's, um, and, um, or 2018, I'm sorry. And, um, what we have decided to do this year in order to be able to make a quick move once we can, is we have not, uh, created any hard copies of the student handbook. It's all, um, it's all online. Um, and so it's the, right now, it's the old language. It's none of the language that you see in the proposed conduct policy. Julia, I know, I can't hear you, I see that you're talking, but.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can.
Huh, so weird. Um, anyway, I was going to say, um, so fingers crossed, we're going to return to in-school learning at some point in time. How, how will, I'm just thinking back to, um, the formal complaint that we had last year that was violation of, that was listed sort of as a, as an aside in the student hand, discipline handbook, but led to an expulsion. And wondering, like, how, you know, how we're going to get the word out? Cause I think, I know as a parent, like, you sometimes have to tell people multiple different ways and sending just like, hey, here's a link to the student handbook does not mean anybody gets it. But I guess, um, so I'm wondering how, when we transition back, is there going to be sort of like a grace period or are we just going to assume like, hey, everybody looked at that link? And, um, you know, are there certain, are there portions of it that are more relevant for distance learning that we should be like, hey, this should be covered in like all school emails?
Uh, I don't know if there's a grace period. I think that I will, I'll circle back with Brenda and her team to find out how they're going to approach this. I think, uh, what I am hearing, and I don't have the specifics, although we've been, um, you know, kind of on a separate track of things. The, what, what, what we seem to be experiencing a lot of at this point in time is cyberbullying. Uh, and some, you know, and I, I, I know because I've seen some of the guidance. We're trying to get out to, um, our administrators and teachers ways to handle it. We're also looking at how to, uh, we're going to bring in the, um, uh, Office of Teaching and Learning to have that part of the curriculum because it really, that we have seen a kind of a rise in this hate speech. And, you know, given that we are virtual, it's just easier to, to do these days. So I think that's what I'm seeing, uh, in terms of work. It's not necessarily in the student, I don't know if it's, uh, I think it's in the student handbook. I had to have to look at it, but I know we are trying to deal with that is, because that's a concern at this point.
So I'm gonna, I think I'm going to make a request. So if we could get, uh, an update on the status of the discussion, um, at the next meeting. But also, can we get, um, can we get a report on, or a, a staff memo on, the impact of, um, holding the, the whole policy in abeyance pending, uh, and, uh, pending discussions with PAT? What kind of impact that has on practices at the school level?
Absolutely.
And whether, whether the PAT issues are separable from the rest of the policy? Like, could we, could we go forward on a policy, um, extracting out a, a, a portion of it pending further discussion? And then we could, we return to the policy later, but like, can we, can we get anything in place in the meantime?
Uh, yes. And that may be, um, I'm thinking of, uh, it may be two memos because I think, uh, the impact of, uh, the impact memo would probably be coming from Brenda's department, um, but they are not directly involved in the negotiation. So I will also ask, uh, probably Sharon would be the best person to ask about the discussions of what, the separability of, of issues.
Yes, that's a call out Rita because the new policy really, I think, leverages and optimizes the racial equity and social justice lens, um, in terms of, um, discipline. Uh, so I hate to think that it could just go into sort of this never-ending discussion, into a discussion that doesn't end or that we revert back because I think, I do think mentally, a lot of people have already, like, yes, this is where we want to be, so we're already going there. Um, and if we say like, oh, by the way, actually, we're not there, uh, even though we spent a year working on it, we're somewhere else. Um, I just think it would be, it's a really important question to answer because they are substantially different.
Okay, and I'm going to throw something else out. A little hesitant to say this out loud, but, um, what would, just, just so that we understand, we, we as a board, understand all of the implications of what we're doing or not doing. In the memo on, um, like the status of the negotiations, um, could we get an explanation for, an explanation of what the implications would be if we went ahead and, um, and just considered this policy, um, as a whole, uh, prior to some kind of negotiated resolution?
We can get that for you.
I, I think we need to know, you know, kind of the full range of implications. Okay. Any other questions about that? Okay, all right, um, so I will look forward. Go ahead, Scott.
Haley and I meet with PAT leadership, um, on a regular basis now. And I can bring this up as a concern without.
Without what?
You're going in and out, Scott.
Oh, sorry. I can bring this up as a concern, um, without getting into any kind of negotiations talk, but just note that this is really important to go forward with.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Um, okay, um, so we're going to move on to the next item, uh, which is a discussion of the, um, a revision or some revisions to the, uh, preservation, maintenance and disposition of district real property policy, um, 8.70.040P. Um, okay, so we got, um, we got, um, a, a redlined version with some, uh, it was red and blue, actually, with some suggested, um, policy revisions from staff. And my understanding is that, um, these, these were, uh, kind of a combination of, language revisions, uh, coming out of staff and also staff's attempt to, uh, kind of translate the discussion that we had at this committee last time, um, about particularly around the criteria for any decision around, um, deviating from the, the norm of, um, using market rate for property decisions. Um, okay, so Mary, you going to do this too? I think you're on mute.
I'm sorry, this was not, I think Claire and Dana were going to be leading this up. Claire?
Okay, uh, are they here?
This is Claire and I'm on the phone because I was serving meal. Um, so I don't have, I'm in the car, so I don't have materials in front of me. And, uh, is Dana not in the meeting?
Not right now.
Okay, I'm wondering if we can move on to the next agenda, agenda item? And if someone that's not driving could text her to see, um, if she's planning on joining us? Or I can try to call and call back in?
I, I will call her, um, now if you want to move on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we'll move on to the, um, the next policy and then we'll circle back, um, in probably 20 minutes-ish, um, or however long it takes us to get through the complaint policy. Okay, um, so complaint policy. So there are two components to this. One is, uh, suggested revisions, um, and, and then the second is, um, the, uh, a plan for engagement around revisions. And, um, I, I wasn't quite, uh, is Shanice, Shanice, you're on the phone now. Um, are you going to be, um, are you going to be online visually at some point? Or are you going to be on the phone for the duration? And I'm asking because should we do the engagement plan first or the policy revisions first? Do you have, do you have a preference?
Yeah, apologies, I'm just shuffling back, uh, to home from Tubman. Um, I know, um, I think, uh, Lydia might be here today, who we had ta, uh, asked to speak. And then we can, I can absolutely, uh, chime in with, with, uh, what things are needed.
Okay, so how, how about we, how about we do the, um, the suggested language changes first? And then we'll get to the engagement plan and, you know, uh, you might be home and it might be easier for you at that point. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, so, um, there were some issues in, in getting the policy, um, texted out to everybody. So, um, I'm hoping people had at least some opportunity to, to work through, to, you know, look through all of it. Um, some of the, some of the changes are, um, relatively minor. Some of them are, are relatively more significant. Let me start with, does anybody have any general comments about any of these suggested revisions? And then we can go through, um, sort of line by line. But, but if anybody has any general commentary, um, and is, is Lydia? Okay, Lydia is here. Um, Lydia, can you walk us through sort of the general, um, orientation that was taken with the suggested edit revisions?
Um, yes, uh, so the, the, the three that, um, I suggested as part of the, uh, end of the year report, um, are notably there on how we, uh, at the beginning, um, where, uh, we want to clear up that only, uh, people that live within our district can file formal complaints. Uh, the other one is, the significant one is, um, uh, the, uh, section one, uh, A, um, uh, there's some significant changes there. And then I, uh.
So this Stephanie, can I jump in? Lydia?
Yes, yes, thank you.
To help you, um, just because I know, I just glanced at it. Sorry to be late, I was at one of the meal pickup sites. The first set of redline that you see in the, um, proposed revisions, I think, is cleanup language that Legal suggested for us, so I just wanted to add that. Uh, now I can't find it, where my document is. And Lydia, I don't mean to speak over you, I just wanted to.
No, that's okay, thank you.
Um, so looking through on page, um, they're not page numbered, I'm sorry, Director Brim Edwards, but, um, on the second and third pages, I still see redlines that looks like Legal suggested. Start, starting on, um, section B, step three, appeal to the PPS school board. We wanted to be clear that, um, that when we offer public testimony to the complainants, um, it's when the complaint is heard, just to make that absolutely clear. Um, middle way through that page, we had an, um, incorrect reference to the Oregon administrative rules. We switched that up. Um, in section D, under other provisions, uh, because we've had a complaint and ask for assistance. Um, and we've shared the type of assistance we've given before, but, uh, we don't explicitly list it out in this document. We thought it would be helpful for, um, members of the public to see different, uh, examples of ways we can help them as they, uh, write their complaint. Uh, and please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Um, following on the next page, number 12, um, we wanted to clarify that once a complaint has gone through the process, um, or the time for the appeal has expired, that, that the same complainant cannot offer or submit a new, um, complaint on the same issue. And then Lydia, have I missed anything?
No, those were the three that were suggested as part of the end of the year report. Um, the other redlines, like you said, it was, uh, done by Legal.
Yeah, cleanup.
Okay.
So we're happy to entertain other revisions as the committee wants to, to talk about. Those were the, those are what we wanted to come forward with.
So I'm wondering if somebody could send me or put the link, or not, send me actually the PDF because I'm with, I'm online right now, trying to use Board Books and, like, some pages aren't showing up.
Oh.
I'll send it in the chat.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry about that, I don't know why that's, it's showing for me, so.
Yeah, it's showing for me as well.
I've got like.
Actually, I went on the materials were posted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going on my computer just so I can get online. I can't see part of it and I have a question. So, uh, I'm not sure I am supportive of removing, um, just given the, the nature of the, um, given the nature of the, the content of the policy of removing, that if the AD is changed, that there's not any board review. Um, because the nature of the complaints is usually, it's, um, a complaint about something that the organization has, has done. Um, so in some ways, the board is sort of the third, the third party versus, so I don't know that I'm. Um, anyway, so I don't, I don't know that I would support, uh, removing that from the policy.
Julia, I didn't hear, what is it, what are you referring to?
The very first, um, deletion on page, on, well, the page that's the first page, um, 1A.
Uh-huh.
Um, which it has the, um, board reviewing changes to, um, the administrative directive. Um, let's see, then, hey, I'm not sure, I guess the question I'd have is, we also got the changes to the AD that I'm assuming you should be focusing on the, the policy, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
I'm sorry, can I, can I interrupt? Um, anybody who's not talking, can you please, um, mute yourself? There's a lot of background noise. Um, Julia, I didn't hear what you said, could you say it again?
Oh, I was just asking, we, we had, there were two, two redlines applied, one of the policy and one of the AD. And my question, which Stephanie answered in the affirmative, was, we should be focusing on the policy right now because that drives the AD. So, I guess also on, and it's on D, D5, and this maybe is a legal question, um, of what the, the threshold of like retaliation and adding the word intentional seems like a pretty material change, um, to, because that basically means, hey, we, we could acknowledge like somebody was retaliated against, but it wasn't intentional and therefore it doesn't fit the definition. So I'd be curious, Mary, like, why we add that? It was like retaliation is retaliation whether it's intentional or not? Or is this like a legal standard that others use? Or why would we be adding?
Uh, I'd, I, I can, let me look up the legal definition, but retaliation is a, an intentional act. You can't negligently retaliate, it's something you specifically do to somebody else. There may be times when an action that you take might have a negative impact on somebody, but if it was not intentional, I don't know that, that you could frame it as retaliation. So, um, I think, and Liz made this, uh, amendment, and so she may have been trying to clarify, what is retaliation? It's not a random act that might have a negative impact. It is something that is intentionally done, uh, to a person.
Yeah, so I guess my, um, in the past, when I've been involved in things in which there was an allegation or looked like, you know, um, retaliatory activity is, um, hardly ever does somebody say, yeah, that was retali, I was, I did that in retaliation. I mean, most people say, well, that, you, you're thinking it's retaliation. I was just doing what a normal person would do, or I just, you know, did X, but it definitely wasn't retaliation. And so I'm wondering kind of what that standard is because hardly, I say, hardly anybody ever admits to, I, I did that in retaliation, or you used to hear something in writing. So how, how would we, you know, I guess this is like impact versus intent also?
Um, let me, as I said, I didn't, uh, make this, let me review what the, with the legal definition is. Um, I think you're absolutely right that in most cases, people are going to come out and say, I, I retaliated. And so what you're looking at in terms of the evidence is that is the, the link between the impact, I'm sorry. Sorry, uh, uh, and that kind of the line, right? You're looking at the sequence of time, you're looking at the, you know, the, uh, the directness of it, things like. I mean, you're looking at a lot of, uh, evidence to try to put together what, and prove intent. But I can, um, uh, I can go back and do a little research on the legal definition, both as it stands in, because it is defined in the, um, for educational purposes as well, so.
Great, yeah, okay.
Clarifying question on the, uh, resources that we are offering for assistance. Is that a list of community resources?
So Lydia, Lydia?
feel free to add, but I would say it would more be a list of offering of services that we provide. For example, if someone would like their documents translated, we do that on their behalf. We pay that cost of a translator or interpreter. Lydia, do you have any other?
Yeah, so I also had a complainant who didn't know how to write. And so she basically was telling me what she wanted on the complaint and I was typing it for her.
So we would come up with a more exhaustive list of ways that we make ourselves available. It's not just Lydia, but we would have, we'd want to think of a good comprehensive list, just to be service oriented towards members of the public.
I guess on the one hand, I'd want to frame it as limited resources because it's pretty open ended, just to say, we'll provide whatever you need. And then have that, for example, list, or to have that list of what we're actually willing to do spelled out. But also leave room for doing something else if we haven't thought of it yet. If it's a reason, if it's a reasonable request. But I think we should be careful not to, I mean, what we're, the purpose of amending this is to say, we don't do everything for you. We're not providing you with legal, you know. So just to have that limiter upfront, but but to have that comprehensive list of what we are willing to do.
And I think that was a big one this past school year. I think people, what people thought was that we would be able to provide them with legal assistance.
So what do we, should we just say we don't do that? Or did we already do that? I'm looking at that.
No, we don't do, no, it doesn't specify it on the policy. So, you know, I had to explain it to them, but it wasn't, it wasn't clear.
So in the list of resources, do we, can we, that are, the links to, can we just be explicit that that's not one of the things that we offer?
We could do that, yeah.
I guess I just run that out to the, also that the committees or the staff, or whether that's, if that's what we're concerned about, shouldn't we just state that? Like this is, this is a legal process.
Right.
We did get-
Sorry, go ahead, Cheryl.
Well, I was just gonna, sort of piggyback on this. Are we actually contemplating a list of resources? Or are we, are there resources that we can identify now where, that we could just name? I mean, if you're talking about translation or interpretation, we already know that. And then, because I'm with Scott, I mean, I'm a little nervous about leaving it fairly open ended because if I were reading this and I had a click on a list, I would think the list is going to be pretty extensive. And it sounds like that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think the list is shorter than that probably indicates by showing you would be clicking on a list. So I think it's, you know, help actually drafting it if someone cannot write, like Lydia described, we'd find a good way to explain that. And then, as we mentioned, translation and interpretation. I guess those are the first ones we came up with. We wanted to also, I mean, I'm trying to think back on what other people have asked for. We could just list it directly in the body of the policy, if that's clearer. And we could suggest, we could work on some language to bring back to you. I'm sorry, the one other thing I would add is, because we plan on doing community engagement around this, it would be helpful to find out, especially with some of our students and families of color that don't tend to use the formal complaint process. It would be helpful to be able to leave us a little bit open ended, to see what would be helpful in terms of support they would need, what would make them feel like this is a more approachable process for them to not only learn about if they don't know about it already, but also access. So one thing-
Sorry. Go ahead. I was just to suggest, because I agree with Rita that by putting the, here's a list of resources that if you don't have like a pretty extensive list of helpful resources, that you will, you will set expectations before the click. So one way we may want to do it is just changing number two, number two to number one with like, the district will provide resources for complainants who request assistance in preparing a written complaint, such as translation and interpretation services, and inputting written information text into the complaint form. So give like two really sort of basic examples without a longer list. And then, then I do think we should have the delimeter of, this doesn't include, like because this is an illegal proceeding, that's not something that's being offered. But that way, I think you are pretty explicit, like there's limited support for it, to do the basic pieces of it without creating a complaint industry.
The other thing I would say is, I think, I think the committee has an expectation that once the community engagement happens, we'll be getting a report. And if there are any recommendations for additions, we can add it then. But, but at least this gives it some sort of, yeah, I mean, we need to be limited somehow.
So I think that makes a lot of sense. We can add in language like Director Brim Edwards suggested and start with that as we go out with engagement.
Because it sounds like the only resource not listed there is, we'll write it if you dictate it, if you're not versed in writing. We already have translation called out. So saying there's a list of resources, I'd say scratch that entirely and just put in the, and I don't know what the right verbiage is, if you're writing challenged, will help with transcription, you know, figure out the right words there. And leave it, leave it be, or maybe include Julia's wording about this is not a legal process. But I think if we, if we, if we're not promising resources, then the whole legal thing drops out.
That makes a lot of sense. We can do that. Sorry, I got a lot going on right here.
My other question, this is a legal one, on number 12, when we basically state that, you know, if it's been previously filed, investigated, responded to, I just want to make sure that if most of these, that we can do that, that we're allowed to do that in terms of Division 22, whatever the Division 22 rules are. I just want to make sure that we're not, like, we're not creating something that's not allowed in statute.
Absolutely. So this came about, I think, from Joy Ellis in helping us respond to some complaints where she said, well, you're not explicit, but you can, you can, you don't have to accept duplicate complaints. And if we're changing our policy, we should just be very clear about that upfront. Mary, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that.
That was the guidance that I understood as well.
My only question would be, if new evidence comes up after the complaint has been heard and decided, would that be grounds for a rehearing?
I believe so. I would think so, but let me, let me check on that.
So one thing.
If we should have some language in it.
What did you say? I'm sorry, I missed it again.
If there is, you know, if new evidence is grounds for a rehearing, we should, I think we should-
We should add that? Okay.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, all right. I wanted to make sure that the students have an opportunity to make any comments or have any questions.
Thank you, Rita. No, I don't think I have anything other than, I agree with you, Scott, in that if there's new evidence, that should make it, but yeah, that should make the process open to have a rehearing.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, just one thing, the language in 12 is kind of unclear. It just says that like complaints that have been filed and investigated can't be refiled. But could you just file a different complaint then? I mean, it just, refile just means you're filing the same exact complaint, right? I guess, to me, it's not very clear.
Correct. So if a complainant refiles a complaint with the same concerns that the board already heard, then they would not be able to refile it. Now, if, if sometimes they phrase it in a different way, and so we need to investigate again.
Okay, but could it not be the same concern, but different instances where that happened, I guess?
So for example, that would be a new complaint then. If, for example, if something happened in October and there was a complaint made in October about that, and then it was heard and then another instance of the same thing occurred in December, we would treat that as a new complaint because they're separate matters. But if it's the same, if the November complaint harkens back to the same thing that happened in October and we had already addressed it, we would, we would refer them to the previous complaint and say, we've addressed this.
I tend to agree with Jackson that we might need to clarify the language a little bit about what would constitute a new complaint as opposed to a second complaint about the same thing.
I understand. Yep, we'll work on it and we'll, we'll get you some different language.
Okay.
So I had, I had one other issue in B, the Step 3 Appeal to the PPS School Board. The, the language says, a complainant may submit additional written information to the board and may provide testimony when the complaint is heard. So we've had cases in which that, well, the complainants offered, provided additional information, but so has the district. And sometimes that information has been provided at the, maybe the board got it in advance or it's actually provided at the meeting where we're about ready to vote. And it seems like, so that all parties have all the facts that are being presented to the, to the board that we should, I would suggest we should add language that said something like, the complainant or staff may submit additional written information to the board. And, you know, staff and the complainant will have access to it so that we don't have cases in which only some of the parties have some of the information. And it's not a judicial proceeding, but it just seems like, I think it's already, can be somewhat of an intimidating experience for parents or students or parents with their children to come into a meeting. And if you don't know, if you don't, you haven't had access to everything that the board has been provided to the board, I think it makes it more challenging to sort of share what your concerns are. So I would just add, I would like to add something in there that everybody gets access to all the information before the board votes on it, so that it's, so it's kind of clear what the information is, unless it's a student, there's a student privacy issue, what the information is that the board is basing its deliberations and vote on.
So you see that as coming in under A, so under two. If they, if the complainant appeals, then or once they appeal to the board, all materials that are provided to the board will be provided to the family?
Yes.
Or do you want it in B? I think it makes more sense, but you can go either.
I thought, I said in B. It seems like there's already in that sort of introductory graph, a place where we're saying that the complainant can submit additional information. I, from having talked to some complainants afterwards, they, they're like, what do you mean, there was additional information? And it's like, well, you know, just like you were able to provide additional information. And sometimes what the complainant provides in additional written information, the district feels, staff feels, to respond to. But it's just like, everybody should have the same, like, when we walk in that room to make a decision, everybody should know what information is going to be the base, is the basis of the decision making.
So language that says both parties shall provide all information that is intended for the board prior to the-
Yeah, in a timely manner.
Yeah, yeah. We'll put a, within five days, because a lot of time, I mean, does that seem timely?
That seems like maybe unrealistic.
Okay.
Also, for example, somebody submits something, you know, three days before, and it's like, oh, we should respond to that because like, I have some additional information.
About at least a day before.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm, was more thinking of, and I'm open to what that time period is, but I don't think it's fair when we say like, hey, you're going to come in, you get 10 minutes to say your piece, and then they come in, it's like, oh, by the way, the board got this, you know, a whole new proposal, or here's, here's what the district staff is going to do in response. And then they're like, oh, well, like, my 10 minutes of things I was going to say, you know, I'm going to reorder it because I didn't know you were going to offer that. And I think just in fairness, I mean, and if, I mean, one thing, it may have the, the impact it may be is maybe we avoid some board having, having even the executive sessions or the sessions where we're voting on it because that may be the way to get to the way we, things are resolved, not actually at the board vote.
Right. I think if, maybe the language, at least a day prior, and then that gives everyone the opportunity, including the board, to review what will be presented.
Yeah, I'd say, and the complainants, and this is more like an Administrative Directive or just even the practices, but so that, and I've had several conversations with Stephanie and Lydia and Roseanne about this, is just the complainants knowing what to expect in those sessions because most of, most of those people that I've had to afterwards, or even before, it's a very intimidating, not because we're intimidating people, but just the nature of it. And I think a lot of times when they've gotten to that point, they've gone through a lot of different things. And so I think the more that we can just share what the process looks like, the more comfortable people will be. the more comfortable people will be in the proceedings. We don't want people to feel, I think, uncomfortable or intimidated.
Yeah, I agree, Julia. Maybe it's, there's a reference to it here, as you and Mary have discussed, but we also be explicit in the AD, because we do that, we do that now. And it's a practice, but it's not necessarily written down. But a lot of it based on the conversations you've had with us, we want to make sure we do get the same information to everyone beforehand. We don't want to set people up so they feel, you know, like they're missing some key information and walking into something without being totally prepared.
I mean, I had a couple of, "I didn't know the principal was going to be there." It's like, well, of course they're going to be there, they're like, you know, part of the, you know, what, what happened. And so I say, I think just minimizing surprises, so that we have a process that's respectful to staff and to the complainants, and certainly to students.
But by the same token, it might be, we, we might want to clarify here that some of these hearings will be public and some will be in executive session.
That's a great add, Rita, because I think that's the other thing, people, especially with virtual meetings, it's never quite clear, like, are we in a public session, or, or not? And then, so it's clear, like, and whether we're going to vote in public or in private?
Right. And, and even if it's an executive session, some of them, you know, under certain circumstances now, media can be excluded, but generally speaking, not. So some of that can probably go in an administrative directive. But I'm thinking most parents, most complainants may not know that there is an administrative directive, and that they ought to be looking at that too. But if we could figure out what level of specificity we can put in, in here in the policy, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I agree, that was really important to include. And the AD is fairly simple, because we line out the steps so comprehensively in the policy. So I would recommend probably doing it in both, but that's a really good add.
We could add language that some will be, I mean, more generally in the policy, and then, as we've done in some other policies, add a hyperlink that will take you to the specifics. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. So can I, I had a couple of questions, and then I have a suggestion for some additional language. So let me ask my question first, because I think I know the answer, but I want to ask it anyway. For a while, we had a hotline for, for complaints about sexual misconduct. Am I correct that we no longer have that?
I'm sorry, what?
So for a while, we had a, in a non, a hotline that was available for complaints about sexual misconduct. Am I correct that we no longer do that?
We don't have that, we have instead, we have just created a workplace harassment hotline. So we have an email and phone, and a direct phone line, because under the new workplace harassment statute includes sexual harassment. And so, oh, go ahead.
But that's only for workplace, right? So that's only for employees?
Right, and then, or, under, in the Title IX website, there are two resources that are listed, one going to, directly to our Title IX director, the other one is Safe Oregon, and those are both on the Title IX webpage.
Okay, so there is, there is an alternate mechanism. Okay, we probably, we probably need to put that in here, too. So it's, you know, we have, there's a thing. So the list of types of complaints, it includes health and safety, which in, in our heads includes sexual misconduct or abuse of some kind. But, and then we, underneath timelines, we say that time limitations under certain circumstances can be extended, and one of them is sexual abuse or conduct. But we might want to add somewhere that there, you know, for certain kinds of complaints, there are other mechanisms available as well. And, and I would think.
Sorry, Rita.
Go ahead.
There, there is a section where it talks about anonymous complaints. I'm wondering if we can add to that?
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Because they wouldn't necessarily, I mean, they might be anonymous, but they might not. So, you know, I mean, instead of labeling it anonymous, I don't know, make see something like other complaint mechanisms, I don't know, something. And we also might want to include in there the child abuse hotline, just FYI.
Okay.
Anyway, okay, so the, just to, I, I also have a few copy edits in here, and I'm saying that out loud so that if I don't send them to you in the next few days, somebody nag me. They're not big, but anyway. The proposal I would make is, I'm not quite sure where this would go. I think it would probably go at the end of other provisions, D. And, and I drafted some language, it probably needs refinement, but anyway, this is, I don't know where I'm headed.
And Rita, you wanted in, you're thinking in B?
D is in dog.
Okay.
So we can, we can mess with the language, but something like, "Since the board acts as an appellate body in this process, once a formal complaint has been filed, individual board members should refrain from direct contact with complainants or undertaking individual investigations or individual activities outside the formal complaint process."
I thought Liz said that we're not, this isn't a judicial proceeding, nor is it an app, appellate process.
Well, it's not, and we might want to, we can mess with the language, but, I mean, we are hearing appeal. So we do have, I mean, the board, the board is the kind of the.
Interfere. Yeah.
I, I think we need to have some level of distance from, from the complaint process in order to be able, I mean, if we're supposed to be in appeal, that means that we're not supposed to be directly involved with the thing that is being appealed.
I wouldn't agree with that language.
So you can come up with some alternative language.
Why don't you send it around? But I, I know earlier when we had this discussion that, Liz is pretty clear, it's not, it's not a judicial process, nor an appeal process, it's just a complaint, a complaint process.
But we say throughout that these are appeals, so either they're appeals or they're not appeals.
Right, but they're.
But if they're appeals, then it, it's true, it's not a judicial process, but any, any kind of appeal is supposed to be to someone who has not been directly implicated in the, the thing that is being appealed. And if individual board members intervene in the middle of the complaint process, that kind of undermines the, that distance that I think needs to be there if we're going to do, if we're actually going to serve it as an appeal.
How, how would we, besides the half an hour meeting, how would we get, receive information from the complainant? We have obviously ample opportunity to get information from staff if it's, if the answers are provided. How would you see board members getting information that does not reside with staff?
We get written information.
It's not our job to investigate.
It's not, I'm not investigating, I'm just saying, asking a question, which is different from investigating.
So we get information.
Outside of the hearing?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, outside of the 30 minutes that we have when we're about ready to, to vote. How, how would we get that information?
Scott, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we get the written complaint, and their response all the way up. And then we hear from them, and we know from experience that there have been times where we've said, "Okay, wait a minute, there's, there's got to be a better way to work this out," based on what we heard from the complainant. So I, I think there's plenty of opportunity for that to happen, and that's, we, we've seen that in action.
And I think if individual board members are conducting separate discussions with complainants, then the issue that you brought up before about not everybody at the hearing having the same information, I mean, if individual board members are gathering information through sort of extra process, I want to say extrajudicial, but I mean, like, a, a separate complaint mechanism, that means that the full board cannot fulfill its capacity of, of having, of serving as an appeal, because we're not all going to have the same information.
Well, we'd all have to have the same information from staff then as well. So this, this goes to, like, my earlier point of not everybody having the same information. So we've walked into an executive session in which a whole bunch of new information gets provided by staff that maybe some board members have and some, some don't.
I completely agree with that. I mean, I, yes, I, I want us to have a, a process where everybody has the same information, so we all know, we, we can all individually and collectively make a well-informed decision based on the same information.
So going back to the timeliness, it seems like there may be multiple facets to this, where we provide, as soon as appeal, an appeal is requested, we would provide everything, it would be incumbent on the, on us to provide everything we have thus far. So the information and the responses from both the district side and the family side. And that can be done, you know, as soon as the request to appeal to the board is made, and then.
So there are a couple things.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Mary. We do that as soon as we can get a board, confirm, confirmation on the board date. Lydia and Roseanne work together to get that communicated. But we also have a board packet that is going to come out the Thursday before the board meeting, that there will be a, a summary of what happened and all of the materials. So there's, there's, it's a two-part process.
It's already in place, okay.
So again, I want to see the specific language. I will say that, is, are you suggesting, Rita, that it just be the actual complainant?
Rita, you're, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I don't understand the question.
Okay, so here, here's an example, I'm trying to think without being too specific. We had a complaint about something that was missing at a school. And I'm kind of like, wow, you can get expelled for that? Which seems interesting thing to be expelled for. And I talked to a couple people, I talked to a couple retired principals, and they're like, "Of course, like, here's how serious that is, and here's what happens when you lose that item, because it's so important." And so that wasn't talking to the complainant, but certainly gave me an appreciation of what, it's like, when I'm getting ready to vote on upholding a student's expulsion, and I'm kind of thinking, hmm, I don't know about, about this. To me, it was useful, I wasn't investigating, but I talked to a couple retired principals about, well, what would, you know, how would you have reacted if you had lost, or this had been stolen from you? And their reactions, like, gave me a lot of insights into this, the serious, how serious it was. And so, I'm, my question was, are you talking about just like not talking to the complainant? Are you saying the only source of information is like your written record? Because the other, the other thing, just on that, on that particular issue, I talked to a couple expulsion, people who do expulsion hearings for the district, and the whole district process, which I'm glad we're changing now, about how people were under the impression that expulsion officers were, officers were under the impression that those things were essentially expunged from people's records, when in fact they, when in fact they're not, was also like, I think, helped me think through how I wanted to approach it, and then from a policy standpoint, some things that probably we needed to change. But it wasn't from talking to the complainant about the complaint, but it was having a better understanding of the process, and actually, I think, coming up with some things that probably needed to be changed.
So I would say, I think absolutely board members should not be having individual discussions with complainants once a, once a formal complaint has been filed. I think that's completely inappropriate. In terms of getting additional information, my preference, my personal preference, would be instead of individual board members asking individuals for some information, which then does not get conveyed to the rest of us, I think it would be better if we had a system where individual board members would send a, a question to staff, and then staff would come back with information that would be available to all board members, so that we can all walk into a hearing with the same level of information, so that we can all make well-informed deliberate decisions. That would be my personal preference.
Sometimes there's a culture of discouraging asking questions, just saying.
Well, what did that mean?
Well, I think it's like, hey, this is gonna take a lot of staff time to answer your questions. Or you don't, you don't get the answer before you actually have to make the decision. So, I mean, it would just, it would require that if that's, if that's the process, then it, then that's the process, not that's the way we don't have questions asked.
Well, I mean, I, I think we ought to have processes in place that are doable and produce the kind of information that we need in a timeline that we need. Um, I mean.
I, I agree, I agree.
Maybe, so maybe, um, maybe one way to deal with this would be, um, there's a thirty-day clock when a, um, when an appeal, um, is made to the board. So there's, there's a thirty-day window when everybody, when staff at least, know that there's gonna be a Level Three appeal to the board, right? And presumably, pretty much everything has been done already. The only thing necessary at that point is to compile the information and compile a staff memo.
Which is required within thirty days already. We have to, we have to offer the appeal opportunity within thirty days of receiving it already.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, that's already in place. Um, we, we have been getting the materials, um, only, what, like five days in advance of a hearing? How about we say we need to get it ten days in advance? So that any questions that arise can be dealt with, um, by staff. Um, instead of board members having to pick up the phone and call people that they may know through other means. So, and, and that wouldn't even have to be in the policy, that could just be an adjustment of internal practices.
I mean, it's helpful to get the information at the very beginning anyway because, I mean, we've had some complaints. I'm trying to think, there was one that was hundreds and hundreds of pages. You got to the end of it and it was arguing about whether we'd offered dozens of meetings or, you know, whether it was actually dozens or less than a dozen. But that was like, you know, something like, I can't remember how many pages, but it was something like four to five hundred pages. It was some obscene amount, so it would be good to get those in advance. Um, anyway.
So, so, I mean, if, if that's what we're talking about, that would resolve your concerns about this, um, suggested revision, um, we can take that offline, we don't have to do it at the committee, not the committee level.
Did you send the language around, like I say, I think part of it is process, but also it's process implementation? Um, cuz it, I just wanna see, like, how it actually.
Okay.
Would work.
Okay, so why don't we, um.
We've gotten off topic in terms of the policy language, and I'd like to see us go back to that and.
Right, so, yeah, well, I'll, I'll send around my suggestion. Are there any other, uh, any other discussion about any of these suggested amendments or anything else?
Just, uh, just one concerning the most recent topic of discussion. Um, in that I agree with you that no board member should have an individual discussion, um, with a complaine. However, I don't know that discouraging individual research is necessary. Um, just, I, I just don't think it's necessary to, uh, say that a board member couldn't, um, if they wanted to talk to others.
Well, um, okay, I will send this language around and then we might need to have another discussion about this. But, um, why don't we, why don't we stop it here? Um, and, uh, anything else on this complaint policy?
Um, so should I just circle back? I don't wanna re, re-raise the issues I raised later, I'll just circle back, I'll send it, the question to Liz, and I guess we can discuss it at the next, at the next time or send around language. Um, are we gonna talk about the community, um?
Yes, I, yes, but, um, okay, so, so Julia, you send around any additional info that you want us to have. Um, I'll send around the language plus some copy edits that I had. Um, and then, um, we'll bring it back probably at the next committee meeting. Okay, um.
Word documents?
I'm sorry, what?
Can we get the word documents sent around?
The word document?
Can we get the document?
A word, a word document?
In Word?
Um, I don't have it in Word, so can somebody get us the word document?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, okay, the, um, community engagement plan for the complaint policy. Um, who, Denise, so you can talk about that, Lydia, who, you can talk about that?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to start us off. Um, so I know, um, a couple of weeks ago, the process began with the user guide, uh, in looking through some potential, um, groups, um, especially folks who may have participated or, um, have previously filed, um, uh, or engaged through the process before. So, uh, various kinds of groups to, to think through. In addition, um, to, uh, completing this, uh, user guide, there's some thinking around, um, how to bring the potential, um, uh, suggested revisions um, in those discussions, um, to, um, get further feedback on. Um, so, um, and in terms of timing, I think there's some finalizing, um, happening, um, with the plan. And, um, I know Lydia had some conversations with Dani and others, um, as well. Um, and, um, I'm not sure, uh, what, if we would add anymore, uh, to that, um, in terms of where we are.
Do you have any sense of timelines for this, um, engagement process?
So we, we, um, based on our conversations, well, based on conversations Lydia had with Shanice and Dani, I'm not gonna take credit for her work on this. Um, I, we recommend it be pretty comprehensive, actually, the engagement. Um, especially, like I said earlier, if we want to learn and, uh, learn from, but also introduce the, the process to families and members of the public that don't, um, really know about it. Um, and we know that's based on our demographics, that tends to be our students and families of color. So, um, it's kind of comprehensive. We wanted to give you the list of who we were thinking of, um, sort of groups we were thinking of. And we also talked about putting together some sort of survey, just a general survey for, um, former complainants, um, to, to get some general feedback, which we have not put together yet. I mean, this could well take several months, it's not, um, as I'm learning, it's not something we get to turn over to a team to go do. It's really incumbent on the people who own the policy, right? So, um, I just see in this virtual, um, setting we're in, uh, it would take, you know, I would say before the, at least until the calendar, end of the calendar year, to get some of these conversations and information pulled together. Um, so we did, we left it as TBD in the document, um, just to get this committee's feedback before we proceed. Lydia, please feel free to share too.
Oh, thank you, and you covered it, you covered it all, thank you.
So I think this is a really good plan. I guess one thing that I, um, I'm worried that sometimes, like, the immediate, um, really, um, has a, uh, an outsized impact on, on kind of what we're thinking about things. So I'm thinking, it's this past, like, the last four months of the complaint process, that we shouldn't let that overshadow, like, all the other, um, complaints, cuz I think we've had some unusual, like, you know, just more unusual activity than normal. Um, and so, and so I think that's sort of like one bucket of sort of feedback we can get. But there's a much broader set of feedback potentially that's available to us. But I, one thing I, I worry about, um, that we might get, um, it might be hard for people, or people might be reluctant to give feedback because they're, I mean, by the nature of it, are, you know, potentially giving critical feedback to the, the entity that they're being critical of. Um, so thinking about ways in which we really can get authentic feedback, um, in settings, um, in which, uh, people don't feel intimidated or like, they don't, you know, I'm just, I'm giving feedback to the very institution, um, that, you know, that did this. Um, and so Shanice, I don't know, like, what techniques your team would use to, um, really create a safe place for people to feel like they can share, um, sort of their experience in the process, especially people who have been through the process. Because I do think it's pretty stressful on many people in the, in the process. And I think it might be hard for them to say, like, here's where I've, I didn't feel comfortable, or I felt the district was, like, giving me the stiff arm, or we didn't get all the information, or it was. Just some concern that I would have is that we wouldn't get sort of unsanitized feedback or people would feel safe providing feedback to the larger entity. So I think, may as a question for Shanice?
Uh, thank you Director Rem Edwards. Um, yes, you can definitely, um, uh, continue to think through some of those considerations, especially, um, for folks who, um, are feeling satisfied with their experience in the complaint process to, um, have, have meaningful ways to, um, respond to, um, what that could mean to address, address it, um, now. Um, and so, um, I think both, um, for folks who have participated, um, I think there's, uh, some data that will, will eventually, um, be potentially talked about too, a little bit more. But, um, as we both reflect on folks who've engaged through the process, um, that's critical and important. And also, uh, have, uh, some thinking around doing, uh, engagement with, with other groups, um, students, um, and, uh, in diverse populations and what that might look like. Um, uh, to think about, um, how to make, uh, make this both more accessible to folks who, um, are underrepresented maybe in, in accessing the service. And also, um, what it looks like to address, um, where we have, uh, maybe experienced issues or concerns. So that's something we wanna be, uh, at, at the fore, have at the forefront of our continued, uh, discussions and design of, of these spaces. Um, and, uh, wanna make them, of course, uh, safe, um, for people, um, to show up with, um, any perspectives or, um, tensions or views that they have, um, on, on how we can shape, um, shape this work.
Okay, um, any other comments about the plan?
Uh, so, one, uh, other group that I'm not seeing here listed, um, that it would, I'd be interested in sort of getting their feedback. Um, and I, I know we don't deal with staff complaints in this complaint process, that's, um, something else. But I know lots of staff get involved in complaints because something happens at a school, so you have the principal. And I, um, would be interested in knowing, like, for example, if PAPA had a point of view on, like, how this policy, um, plays out for, you know, principals and administrators who are, you know, the people usually who are kind of on the front line of what happened with the complaints, or often is. Um, so I, it would, I think it'd be useful to get their perspective as, as, as well.
That's a great idea.
So, okay, are we getting, are we getting community feedback on the whole policy or on the specific changes?
So I would do it on the whole policy. I mean, um, we listed the changes we were coming up with, we were proposing, you have others. But I think because there are so many families that, um, really don't know, um, my guess is they don't know about this process and policy, that we would wanna get just general feedback as well. We certainly wouldn't wanna limit it to just the proposed revisions.
My understanding was that, um, yes, we wanted feedback on the tweaks, but also we wanted feedback on, we've been doing this different policy for two years, how's it working? Is that correct? And that's why you wanna send a comprehensive process?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure that's where we're at.
Sure, okay, um, we're way behind schedule, so I wanna move us along. Um, uh, can I make one request? Um, I know, I know that it's difficult to, um, to really estimate how long anything is gonna take these days. Um, but, um, I would ask, and, and I think in this case in particular, we wanna make sure that we have engagement policy that, um, that really does give us a comprehensive view of feedback. Um, um, at the same time, we also need to be attentive to, um, you know, we wanna, if, if we're gonna end up making any changes, um, we wanna have enough time in the school year to be able to process those as well. So I think my request would be, um, if you could, um, Shanice, if you could give us a, um, a kind of a status report, say, I don't know, beginning of November, maybe? Um, just like how it's going, you know, what you've been able to do, what you still wanna do. Um, and then, um, uh, if you could give us kind of your best guess at that point about how long you'd need to kind of complete it, um, then at that point, I think we can, we can set another, um, kind of milestone. I, I don't know, beginning of January, end of January for another status report or something like that. Does that make sense? Like, just coming back to us, beginning of November with, um, where we are?
And, and Rita, I'm just gonna, technical point, and I'm coming in late, forgive me for being double booked. Um, I think that what, what we're trying to establish with the engagement process is that the, the subject matter experts for the policy will be responsible for updating the board, not Shanice. On every policy, Shanice will be consulting, but that that role belongs to the subject matter experts.
Okay, that's fine, uh, somebody, who is that? Somebody come back and talk to us, beginning of November, okay?
Who is that? Is that you and Stephanie and Lydia?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll, and then we'll take it from there and, and see how things are going.
Yes, I was gonna say that we're not gonna use Shanice's expertise to help us figure this out and work through it. But yeah, it's not on your team, Shanice, to do all the engagement. That's, that's why I was trying to, uh, build in some time, cuz I'm, it, it's a little overwhelming to thinking of getting it done in our schedule, but we'll do it.
Yeah, okay.
November, early November is fine.
Thank you. So, so let, um, I'm, I'm gonna stop us here. Um, we're, we're getting on schedule, so I want to turn to the real estate policy. And I think I saw Dana and Clay. And I think I saw Dana and Claire.
I I want to, in fairness, as the, I I want to not take away any of their subject matter expertise, but I was the one who was merging. The various flow of inputs, so I'd love to frame that and then have you have access to everyone that you need for this, Rita. Um, the, there, there are three types of edits, redline edits in the document that you have. There are some technical edits about rights of way and uh short term leases that came from the real estate team. Um, and as we, you've seen these on consent agendas, this is an effort for. To to open up for discussion whether the board needs to approve each and every one of those as parts of development projects, or if. This modification would allow those to be uh processed more cleanly. There are also edits that are my attempt to capture the ideas you all discussed three weeks ago at the last meeting about the below market terms. And those are the bulk in the middle. And then there are a couple of additional edits um. That are two different terms in in trying to be efficient here with the OSBA. Comparison review process that we decided to put in for your consideration, so to not have to revise the policy. And then have the OSBA overlay review happen again to put those all in the mix together. So there's, it's a bit of a bouillabaisse of um. Uh, policy uh revision inputs. Sorry for the dog. Um, but I think that's the setup I want to get you. The 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 below market term issue is really, this is a discussion point. For, I think, the board members on the committee to further chew on.
Okay. Um. Okay, um. Do we want to? Uh. Why don't we just leap into the discussion about the below market terms? Um, because I think that's. That's the really time sensitive portion of this, right? Um, okay, so. Any comments? Questions?
I have a question. Um, in the paragraph leading up to the A B A to F. The last sentence that says, any express finding justifying less than market terms will consider the following factors. Does that um, is that implying that the. There would be a quote express finding by the board? Um, like that you'd have some formal process, like the board finds, you know, A, C, and F are in play, and therefore. Um, it can be, you know, below market terms and or less than market terms. And then the staff could execute on that? Is that, is that what hap, is that how it happens?
So you look up in that paragraph before that, it requires. Maximum market value unless the board makes an express finding.
So is that in a resolution, like the board finds A, C, and B are at play, therefore staff can have a market, okay? It's it. It seems like we might want to just say that, because I don't know, that um seems like a legal construct.
We can wordsmith it, yeah, I think, but I think there's no ability. That staff doesn't have the ability to deviate from the policy without the board allowing it to do so. You you could simply approve a lease as a variance to the policy without making findings. I mean, you could do that. That's that's another option of the way to structure it, but my sense has not been that's the direction. The board wants to go, and and the findings language is is uh historical, right? So we added what it is, but the the mechanism is something that's legacy language, which it doesn't mean you can't change it, but.
But I guess I would just be interested in what the plain English like translation of an express finding, so like they adopt a resolution that finds. That less than market terms. Based on these criteria, you know, apply to a particular property.
Sure.
Scott, you got anything? Scott? You're on mute.
I was on mute. Um, right below F, there's a phrase that says, the board may also apply these criteria more stringently in the case blah, blah, blah. So those are factors, but they're not criteria. If I understand that right. Criteria would be, and a stringency implies that there's like some numeric value or. An off-on switch or something like that.
I I think this is a rough cut first attempt. I think the criteria versus factors is distracting and just poor drafting on my part. But the idea is that the hurdle, like you you could make one decision, it gives you permission as a board to make one decision in a lease. And another on a sale, and you might not treat this the same facts the same way. Because it is a permanent um disposition and one is for a limited period of time. You, again, you, that that was what I heard in the conversation, some strand of that in the conversation three weeks ago, that uh. Again, I I accept um all critiques of how I've captured what you were talking about, and uh. So I think this is good discussion for that, but. That's the origin.
Critique, I'm not critiquing, I'm just.
I am.
Yeah, um. Yeah, if I'm critiquing anybody, it's the board. Um. You know, I I personally have not sure that. I want to go in this direction, but I understand that we're, this is on the table and. So. Um, that that's, I just got to throw that out there.
Good. Can you, I I'm going to push you a little bit. Can you say more about that? What what does that mean?
I'm not sure we should uh. Ever sell property, for example, or it should be, you know, really, really. Limited, but um, I'm not sure we should ever cut anybody a deal on a lease. Just lay that out there because that has costs. And so I guess maybe what I'm missing from this. Where I would feel more comfortable if we specifically talked about a cost benefit kind of analysis. Because if we, if we just go through, oh, well, they meet these criteria, so let's. Let's cut their lease in half.
I think C, C tries to get to that in that list, Scott, um, but I think it can. There are definitely ways to make it more explicit.
I'm suggesting that is as, that is kind of an overarching framework. For how we proceed.
Okay. Um, I I would.
I didn't catch that last part, Scott, I'm sorry, in case the.
Oh, that that the finding would be that there's some kind of net benefit.
Okay.
Uh, net ongoing.
Yeah, I would second what Scott's trying to say, like a long term benefit, not just an immediate benefit that lasts one to two years. And then later down the line, we find out that. That disposition of real property doesn't really benefit us at all in the long term.
So, um.
I also, let's see. I also didn't understand the next paragraph that says if reasonable attempts. Uh, at disposing a property, I'm just not sure what that means.
I I I think it's an attempt to say if you try to sell it. And you can't, like, it's it's an undesirable property, it's hard to assess market value, it's trying to give you an out for the thing you can't dump when you're trying to dump it. And it's how I, we we pulled that for some other sample policies, to be clear, that did not come from the board. But that was, that's a, in fact, I think that's from the OSBA model rule. So it gives you, you have market value disposition, you have below market value because there's net benefit or however you define it. Or you might have somewhere, they're like, what, you got rid of it for, you know, a song? But that's all, maybe that is market value, and I think this is a rare circumstance, but I I, that was my understanding of what that language meant. I, we can clarify it or we can take it out, but it was, it's sort of that that just catch all, there's a reason to get rid of this. And I presume it to be like a weird shaped parcel of land somewhere, right? You have some straggle or piece that's less than a full something. That's the kind of thing I envisioned when I read it, but I'll. I did not ask the people at OSBA what they intended, I'll be honest.
So can I interject here? Um. I think I want to go back to the legislative history of the um, the policy that we're amending here. Um. That the uh. The intent. Was to limit the district's. Um, ability and willingness to dispose of properties. Um, and the reason behind that was um. PPS has a history of disposing of property that they declared surplus. During a period of low enrollment that um. Turns out, you know, would have been good to keep. Um. And and I personally, I agree with Scott that we shouldn't be selling property, period. Um, public property should remain in the public sphere. So I am not, personally, um, I. I am not eager to enshrine in policy mechanisms for PPS to. To dispense with properties or or get um. Less than fair market value for the use of properties. And it it feels to me like some of this language is kind of excessively permissive. Um, especially that that second to last paragraph, which is, you know. You know, if you, if you want to dump it, we'll figure it out, we'll find a way. Um, which I think is what we did in the past with disastrous consequences. I I don't want us to dump stuff. So, you know, I I want this policy to be as um. Difficult to uh manipulate as possible.
And I want to really defer to Dana and uh Kirsten and Claire on this issue. There may be technical transactions that they are think of, they think of with that language. I I, again, I want to be clear, it came from the OSBA process as we're trying to merge this, but. I think their voices are important if there's something we should be thinking about that we're not.
You're asking, was just about the disposition piece?
Is, yeah, I mean, I I I I totally hear where um the board members are coming from, and I'm not advocating, I'm just making sure. Because it's that we're 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 thinking of the kinds of transactions that come before you, that you have to deal with with this policy. Does that language, is that unnecessary? I mean, the board can always by resolution waive its policy anyway, so I mean, to some extent, you don't even. You you can solve that problem, but is there a different kind of transaction where that language is helpful or not? Just before, because I, before we got it, I just want to make sure we ask the people actually do the work, because I'm not at the front lines of that.
Sure, I, uh, the disposition, we we rarely, so the only property we typically dispose of. Is in the rights of way and and like that are very, you know, like a hundred square feet or something of that nature. We haven't, since I've been here. Sold, except I shouldn't, Washington High School, I take that back. We did sell Washington High School, but that was an agreement made uh several years ago. So um, we sold that extra piece of property, so.
We haven't had surplus property, right? This is a surplus question, surplus that you can't get sufficient return for. I don't want to belabor the point, I just thought since you guys actually deal with this, we should hear from you.
Dana, the one thing I would add is that historically, we have disposed of quite a bit of property when we had a significant amount of surplus. And I think the um current board raises a good point that. Um, that it wasn't always to the district's long term benefit in terms of that market rates and. Um, so they they did make a change, I want to say a couple of years ago, that was um. Making it so that it needed to be market rate. So I do appreciate the current sentiment and uh. That um even uh, you know, a short uh. Reducing a lease is a little bit different than I think of disposing of it permanently. Um, especially, the one piece that sticks with me is once we dispose of it at a lower market value and then that other entity. Um, no longer needs it, and then they sell it at market rate, that's really difficult to have happen. So I don't know how um that would be worked out.
Yeah, so I think um, it's probably worthwhile to sort of bifurcate. The the two issues, because I think one is permanent, and I think, you know, once you do it, you, like, you can't undo it. Um. Uh, so the question, I had a similar question like that Scott had. Of like about that specific, um, you know, apply these criteria more stringently, because to me. It then felt very um maybe subjective um. The process and just like, if we're going to do something permanently, I think I'd want to have um much more sort of objective. Crit criteria if we're going to do it for the sale. Um. And so to me, that needs to be really built out, because to me, that's a very different, it's a very different concept than. I guess when I look at the less than, less than market terms. I kind of think, well, there's like the, hey, somebody hasn't managed their organization very well, and so they're short on cash. And they're asking the district to like give them a break, because they serve PPS students. And then there is, like, we're in the midst of a pandemic, a recession, you know, a whole host of things, like a. You know, set of circumstances that may only happen, you know, once a century. Um, and that, to me, is like a different set of circumstances than. Hey, you misjudged your enrollment, or, you know, for, or you're not running a program that's attracting people or whatever, like, so you're, like, you have, you're cash strapped and you're looking for the district. To bail you out or to give you less than market terms. Which, you know, could be in a number of privators versus a very specific set of circumstances, which I think the, and the bar being higher. But I do think, like, we're in a situation right now where, like, do we want to have. An entity or organization that we work with um. Potentially because we insist on market terms in the midst of a pandemic and a recession, when everybody else is making adjustments, like. We're going to be like, no, same same set of terms, even though there's a statewide eviction notice and everything else. So that's. Guess. I think we should divide them, come up with different criteria, but the first set of criteria, I think if we tighten them up to. To me, what I think this captures, what I heard in a larger board discussion. Um, not just this committee, but like the other other board members of, here's some things that we would consider, especially in this, in this pandemic and recession.
Can I ask, if if people are not talking, can you please mute? There's a lot of background noise. Thank you.
So I do think it's important to distinguish between a business. That is into property management and, you know, you, it's, it's, you're taking on risk and there's profits and losses and. So on over time, and a public entity. When a business might lose some money. You know, that's on the owners of the business and the in in individuals. If we get less money. If we get less money, that's on our students. So I, I think it's important to distinguish between a more market-based setting of leases and rents versus what we're in, which is, it's.
That's why I thought your comments on the net benefit are really important, because like if we are going to take less cash, then what's the net benefit? And if you can't demonstrate the net benefit, then you shouldn't get less than mark, market rate terms. So maybe it's, how do we drive into like more deeply or better distinguish like the net benefit?
Yeah, and, um, I would like to see some language in here that, that at least nods in the direction of, um, below market anything would be only under exceptional circumstances. I, I, I really feel like we need to put some pretty strict boundaries here, given, given past history. Um, I think the bullet point B, special circumstances, particular to the other party, and that's, I, I, I think exceedingly broad. And I would be uncomfortable with something that open-ended. And yeah, I agree that, um, I really would like to see a a distinction between a short, a short-term adjustment and a long-term or permanent deviation from the norm. Um, and I think for sales in particular, I, I would like that to be pretty damn stringent.
Can you talk more about how to define the sale versus rent? So we have a list of some criteria that needs to be more stringent for sale. Can you, the three of you talk a little bit about that so we can get some language that's reflecting?
I wouldn't mind seeing the hundred-year outlook as a, as a frame for selling.
Right, can you say that again?
Yeah, you, you know, the, the, the cliche phrase, we need to have a hundred-year outlook when we're looking at buildings and property. I wouldn't mind seeing that in there as, um, again, as, as a framing device. Uh, when we say long-term, we mean long-term. Or leases, I, I would suggest demonstration of specific financial need or specific demonstration of financial need or something like that. That if, if somebody's coming to us wanting a less-than-market-rate lease, we need to be able to see their books, basically, or something along those lines.
So the other thing, um, it seems like the, uh, framing sentence before the A through F, it needs to be some sort of com- uh, combination, so, you know, a negative, um, you know, a recession or pandemic and a benefit. Um, because if it's just, if it's just one, you pick one of these things out of here and like we almost probably, well, first of all, if you just have A in and of itself, it could be all of the people who are leasing from us. So some sort of, uh, critical mass of the criteria. And then this again, for the, uh, less-than-market terms. And, and the, um, the application of the racial equity and social justice lens, I think it's the word application that's, um, sort of tripping me up. Maybe it's, uh, what we find by applying the, the lens versus, um, that being a fact. Because just the application in itself, that could tell you, like, no, that's not, um, something that, uh, impacts, um, historic ownership, so I don't, maybe it's a different, it's a different verb or it's in a different place, or it's not a verb, but.
Yeah, I think it's at least in a different place, and I'm not married to application, I think, um.
I know what you mean, but I don't think the words say what you, I think, meant.
I don't think you want it to be this thing that stands alone either. It may, it may be better described as the thing that you look at throughout, right? Not, it doesn't back clean up, it's that bad every time.
Well, maybe.
It's a bad analogy because you're going to have two batters, but.
Maybe it's more like when the, uh, PPS racial equity and social justice lens is applied, the impact of students are, because otherwise it's just saying the fact, it's a factor, the lens versus like what the lens.
I wouldn't want to redefine the lens in a lesser sense here, right? I mean, if you're just redefining what the lens produces, we can, we can work with it and I can reach out to Dana too to make sure I'm not narrowing the scope of the lens by dictating the output from its use in a particular circumstance, right? That's, and it's all conceptual, I don't have any specific.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're sort of wordsmithing a bit, but I, I like the point they make, Liz, about pulling it out and maybe putting it in that preceding sentence.
It should guide us and inform us, but if we applied it and it only impacted like white middle-class students, we would apply it, have applied it, but when we apply it, it tells us that maybe that shouldn't be a factor.
Okay. I get, I, I understand where you're coming from. On the application part, I now get it, so thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, um, we are at 6:00 PM and, um, we could probably keep going on, but I, I'm wondering, Liz, do you think you have enough at this point to do a next iteration on this?
I, I think collectively, yeah, it'll take, um, I'll, I'll take a first cut and circulate it and we'll, um, we'll have another, I, I think it's, this has been very helpful from a drafting perspective, so thank you.
Are we going to require a recession and a pandemic or just one of them?
That's for you to answer.
How deep a recession?
Locusts.
Oh God, I knew there was something that hadn't happened this year, but at least, at least in the Midwest.
Well, I'm going to stop this right now because you're tempting fate and, and I won't have it. So, okay, um, anything else? We, we have not gotten, again, to the, um, uh, agenda for the, for the rest of the year, but I promise we'll do it next time. But I want to be attentive to everybody's time. Um, so I, I think we've given you enough for the next version. Um, is there anything else that students didn't get a chance to weigh in? So before, before we stop, I want to make sure, is there anything that you guys wanted to say, um, about this policy?
Um, I suppose just reiterating, um, what, what Scott and, uh, to, a- and also what, what Julia said, um, keeping, uh, closely in mind the impact of, uh, less-than-market-rate lease or selling property for less-than-market rate, the long-term effect it has, uh, on students directly. But, but other than that, nothing for me, no.
Okay.
Hey Rita.
Anything else? Yeah?
So I know you're not going to get to the work plan discussion and I have some things I can send you. Um, there was one thing that I, I wanted to raise, um, not for discussion, but just if it was going to be something that we were going to work on, and, and this was the place to do it versus the whole board, um, that we probably would need to get going fairly soon, and that is if we were going to change the manner in which we elected board members, it's just knowing how long things take, if that were going to be something we were going to, we were going to do, that it seems like that would be something we'd have to either move up on the calendar or get it on the, the full board calendar. I mean, it seems like it makes more sense to do it in the committee, to recommend something to the full board, uh, but that would need to probably happen really, really soon, so I just throw that out there as a.
I second that.
Yeah.
Um, well, I mean, it, um, un- until now, it, it wasn't even on the list of potential topics, uh, for this year, so, so this would be a brand-new proposal, which we can entertain, um, uh, but I, we, we have to talk about this agenda at the next meeting, so.
I'm just throwing that out there just because we're three weeks from the next, or whatever, from the next meeting, so I just want to introduce the concept.
Right, okay, okay. Okay, so we'll, um, we'll probably put that at the top, let's put the agenda at the top of the meeting next time so that we definitely get to it. And, and I'll try to exercise some discipline so that it doesn't take up the whole meeting. So, okay, uh, we're now at 6:04. Any, any final words for the good of the order?
I just want to thank all the cats and dogs. The cats were very, very showy and the dogs were, for the most part, on good behavior.
That's because we're eating food in the kitchen.
So I want to thank David Roy in particular because, you know, now I'm not the only one with a cat who is attentive to board meetings, so.
We got the whole menagerie here, Rita, but the dog is now, I can hear him snoring and we'll bring the rabbit out one of these days too, so.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right, um, thank you all, um, we will, uh, we'll stop here and pick it up again three weeks from now. Um, thank you, everybody, stay safe, be healthy, do all the things we need to do, okay? Thank you, bye.